...other improvements to Colorado as part of the so-called "Take Back the Boulevard" initiative. The South Los Angeles Wetland Park Project was recently honored by the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure with the organization's highest honor, the Envision Platinum Award. The award was bestowed to the city's Bureau of Engineering and a consulting firm not only for transforming what was a former Brownfield site, but also for creating new urban green space and for designing the park to use urban runoff.
Stormwater is conveyed to the wetlands by underground systems that remove trash and other soils.
The park is bordered by South Avalon Boulevard and San Pedro Street between East 54th and East 55th Streets. The death of Marguerite Lamott back in December has left a vacancy in the L.A. Unified School District Board District One that will need to be filled with a special election to be held on June 3rd. Potential candidates will be able to declare their candidacy by filing a declaration of intention to become a candidate with the Office of the City Clerk Election Division, starting from Monday, February 10th to Tuesday, February 18th. Candidates may obtain detailed information and assistance by calling the Election Division at (213) 978-0444, or by viewing the Candidate Information Section by going to cityclerk.lacity.org/election. One of California's most prominent African-American politicians is being remembered as a trailblazer and a champion of education. He passed away in 2012, but as Anita Bennett reports, his legacy lives on at a school in South LA.
D-D. Hey, hey, hey! DHS, we are the best! D-D. D-D-H-S, D-D.
With a rousing welcome from its cheering squad, this high school in South LA is being renamed after Mervyn Diemle, one of California's political pioneers.
Mervyn Diemle was an extraordinary and remarkable man. Came from Trinidad, and he learned the political system very quickly.
Over his lifetime, Diemle broke a series of racial barriers. He was California's first black state senator and its first black lieutenant governor. After leaving state office, he was elected to Congress and represented South LA.
We are naming this school for him in an area that cherishes education, that can benefit from it, and will have him for always as a positive role model.
Before tossing his hat into politics, Diemle worked as an educator and later wrote a book about his journey. He died in 2012 at age 86.
I deeply regret that he's not with us today, but I feel confident to know that prior to his passing, he was very much aware that a school was being named after him.
Now his name and legacy will live on at LAUSD's Mervyn Diemle High School Academy for Multilingual Arts and Sciences.
Within this community, we are a multicultural community. To have someone of such distinction and a former lieutenant governor, the first African-American lieutenant governor of California, means the world to us.
And the high school here has more than 600 students, and they're all learning a second or even a third language in South Los Angeles. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The campus opened in 2012. Before being renamed, it was called South Region High School Number 12. In this week's List of Things to Do, an outdoor party celebrating Valentine's Day, the Harlem Globetrotters come to town, and the LA Zine Fest. Looking for a unique way to celebrate your loved one this Valentine's Day? Head on over to Grand Park Downtown for the Funky Soul Lover's Edition on Friday, February 14th, from 8:00 PM until 1:00 AM the next morning. The Soul Party will be complete with dance floor and live music, food trucks, and a full bar. This sweet dance party is presented in partnership with the Echo and Spaceland Presents. Grand Park is located at 200 North Grand Avenue Downtown. Go to grandparkla.org for details. The world-famous Harlem Globetrotters' one-of-a-kind shows feature mesmerizing ball handling, an assortment of trick shots, and high-flying dunks, all with an array of comedy guaranteed to entertain the whole family. And on Sunday, February 16th, the Globetrotters are coming to town, to Staples Center to be exact, for two games at 12:30 PM and at 5:45 PM. And these games on February 16th take on a twist, as you, the fan, are invited to vote online for one of three new game-changing rules you want to see on the court. For details, to vote, or to buy tickets, go to harlemglobetrotters.com. Staples Center is located at 1111 South Figueroa Street. Anyone who's ever shopped the store at the L.A. Central Library knows it's got more than just books. The Library Store offers a carefully curated collection of fun and eclectic gifts, from whimsical t-shirts to educational toys for kids. And now the Library Store on Wheels will be parking at the LA Zine Fest on Sunday, February 16th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Helms Bakery in Culver City, located at 8703 Washington Boulevard. The Zine Fest is an opportunity for people to share self-published works. A portion of your purchase from the Library Store supports the Los Angeles Public Library. For more info on the Zine Fest, go to lazinfest.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's one of our city's oldest annual traditions, the Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown celebrating Chinese New Year. This year, the Year of the Horse. There's no mistaking this parade for anything else but the 115th Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown. The never-ending dragon danced down North Broadway and Hill Street, delighting families who came out for the popular festival.
Just wishing everybody a great Year of the Horse. That's a proud tradition here in Los Angeles, the tradition of all of us, the Chinese-American community in particular, and all they've contributed. So pleased to be the grand marshal, pleased to be the mayor of this great city.
Come here, Pat Joy. Happy New Year!
Mayor Eric Garcetti, joined by his wife, walked the parade route, wishing everyone a prosperous New Year. Councilman Gil Sadio, who represents Chinatown, also offered some auspicious predictions for this horse year.
We're gonna plow forward like a horse with the thoroughbred of a mayor and his workhorse is behind him. We're gonna change the city and make it a great year for everyone.
The Year of the Horse is believed to be a fortunate year that brings luck and good things.
It gives us time to spend time with our family and to give wishes to each other and hope each other live longer and prosper.
This year's celebration also included a children's festival, where kids got to try their hand at aerial acrobatics with this contraption, and no boat rides here. Instead, kids got to ride on the water in these floating bubbles. While the two-day festival celebrated an important Chinese holiday, it showcased the traditions from the East, as well as the diversity of our city. Guaranteeing an experience that was uniquely LA. And after the parade, there were live music and acrobatic performances on several stages, as well as a craft beer garden and food trucks. If you missed it this year, definitely mark it on your calendar. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What's with all the zombies?
Alert, LA County. Takes the surprise out of disasters like zombie attacks, and without surprise, they're out of a job.
Alert, LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Any skills besides flesh-eating? Pick that up.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, safety notices, and if necessary, zombie attacks.
Next.
Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Hi, this is Rabbi Mens of Chabar of Bel Air, living in the great city of angels.
Sergeants, please call the members. Sergeants, call the members. We need one more to get started, but I do again want to thank Mr. Fannin, Buscaino, Englander, Fuentes, Corretts, Martinez, Oferro, and Price for being members of today's on-time coffee. One more member. Good morning. Happy Valentine's Day, and I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 AM. Public is always welcome. I do want to say that we have a couple of presentations that we'll be doing today, but Mr. Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum, so if you'd please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bannen, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weiser, Corretts, Cory, Labanze, Martinez, Oferro, Parks, West, and 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, Oferro seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Buscaino moves, Price seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request from the Department of Building Safety to receive and file Item 1, and as much as the property has been determined to be owner-occupied single-family dwelling, and therefore exempt from lean processing.
Without objection. Next.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, Items 2 and 3 are items noted for public hearing. We do have cards on those matters, sir.
Okay, so let's move on.
Items 4 and 5 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's, members, let's deal with Items 4 and 5. Any specials for the, per the members? Seeing none, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Items 6 through 8, they're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before us. Cards?
Mr. President, we have cards on all items, 6, 7, and 8.
Why did I know that already? Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations.
Okay, then, you know what? I think I'll start off the presentation today, and I'll start it off from the President's chair. Arlene, come on in, scoot over next to me. Can we get a shot on Arlene and Eugene? Okay, now Eugene is...
A Yorkshire terrier.
Eugene is a Yorkshire terrier, right?
And he's two years old.
And Eugene is two years old, and Eugene came here today, because today is Pet Adoption Day, and he came, he came here today looking, looking for a home, but before I could present him to each and every one of you, he already found a home. He's being adopted by... I was going to adopt him, but my, come closer, my staff member. Let's hug Trudy Abraham.
I'm gonna name him Valentine.
Oh, and I've been informed you're gonna change his name from Eugene to Valentine?
Yes.
Oh, that's, oh, aw. Well, anyway, let's give Trudy Abraham, the new mom, a round of applause.
Oh, Sean's having a fit.
So, oh, yeah, and now my other, one of my workers upstairs is angry at you, so I've just been informed. So, no, good to see you, Arlene, and thank you for all your work. Members, that keeps our adoption rate, where it relates to dogs, at 100%. So every dog that we've brought into this chamber to find a home over the past seven and a half years, we've been successful. Let me look to... Mr. Corretts, are you ready? Okay, then we'll go to CD1. So at this time, we want to, shhhhh. We want to turn the floor over to Paul Corretts.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. Once again, I'm delighted to bring to the City Council some tremendous local heroes, known as mensches, or good people. They are wonderfully dedicated human beings who do great things for people, and who've been honored by being named by the Jewish Journal to their eighth annual mensches list. Dictionary definitions say that a mensch is a person of integrity and honor, possessing admirable characteristics such as fortitude and firmness of purpose. A mensch radiates a fundamental decency and is outstanding and worthy. And the Jewish Journal began its mensch list in 2006. The idea originated with Rob Eschman, the Jewish Journal's editor-in-chief, as a way of making an alternative year-end list, one that is specifically aimed at recognizing under-the-rate our people who do amazing things and are often not recognized for it by the larger community. Here with us, representing the Jewish Journal and its parent company, Tribe Media Corp, executive director, excuse me, executive editor Susan Friedenheim, and associate editor Ryan Smith. And before I introduce the seven mensches who are here today, I'd like to invite Susan to share some thoughts.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Let's give them a round of applause. Let's do that.
Thank you so much, President Wesson, members of the City Council, Councilmember Corretts. We are so appreciative of the honor of being here to honor our mensches. Each year, we get a numerous, more than I can count, nominations for the mensches of people in our community who make us proud to be a part of the Los Angeles community as a whole. These are people who are working with the homeless, working with, working with the survivor, Holocaust survivor communities, Holocaust survivors themselves, who work, who bring children, teenagers, to Auschwitz, to visit the concentration camps, people who just go above and beyond in working with, in food banks and so forth. It's a real honor to be a part of this, and we thank you for honoring them.
Now, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Now I'd like to introduce some of the Jewish Journal's mensches. Six of them from the list of 10 were able to join us today, I believe, and if they'd like, hopefully, we can ask each of them to say a few words. First, we have Stephen Levine, a real estate and business trial lawyer, who's also a member of the Magic Castle's Outreach Committee, and a professional magician who performs as a volunteer at countless charitable events. On any given day or night, he may be entertaining sick kids at a children's hospital, or aging amputees at a VA campus, or 4,000 veterans that are active-duty personnel and their families. Maybe at a school, or a synagogue, or a senior living facility, the Muscular Dystrophy Association, or an autism support group. Wherever he is, he brings smiles of joy and wonderment to people, young and old. Stephen, would you like to say a couple words?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, City Council. President Wesson, it's very, I'm very grateful for being acknowledged by the Jewish Journal for what I've been able to do in terms of the magic outreach that the Magic Castle does bring to the entire LA community and its environs, and we have a wonderful outreach committee that is very active, day and night. I am a full-time lawyer. I often tell people, "I can make your legal problems disappear," as being a magician, and I get much more joy out of bringing smiles and laughter to kids' faces than I do resolving a case in court for a client, unfortunately. But I have a vocation and advocation, and thank you for honoring us, and thank you, Jewish Journal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you for not making us disappear while we're up here. Next, we have Sedonia Lax, who's here with her daughter, Jeannie Benson, and friend, Monica Benson. She's a Holocaust survivor who, over the years, has done many fine things with local organizations, including as a member of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council. But she's here first and foremost because of her essential efforts championing builders of Jewish education, and its March of the Living, which brings high school seniors from all over for a march at the Birkenau Concentration Camp in Poland, and then leads them to Israel for Independence Day, in the process really opening the eyes and hearts, and teaching history, and also giving hope and wisdom. She also has a scholarship that bears her name that enables Jewish teams with limited finances to make this life-changing trip. Sedonia, thank you for everything, and we'd like to hear from you for a few moments as well.
I'm Sedonia Lax, L-A-X, in case you forget it. I am a Holocaust survivor, and I go on the march with thousands of young 18-year-olds to Poland and Israel to inspire them to see what life could be. The march is not about death, it's about life. So please, we visit 11,000 people, and they are all religions and nationalities on the march, and they never forget. Everybody of every nationality and religion should go on the march to know what life could be and it shouldn't be. Thank you.
No, thank you. You're a treasure.
Thank you, Sedonia. And next, I'd like to introduce you to Leslie Edelman, who's a childbirth educator and an infant care specialist and a remarkable volunteer, who oversees operations and volunteer activities at the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry, a coalition of synagogues and churches that provides about 5,000 meals per month to the needy. She also volunteered for the 2013 Union for Reform Judaism Biennial, and many other things, and we thank Leslie and ask her to give us a few thoughts.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. My life is my passion, whether it's at work as a breastfeeding specialist and childbirth educator, a member of Temple Beth Hillel in Valley Village, or as one of the board members and being in charge of volunteers at the North Hollywood Food Pantry. We distribute 500 bags a week, twice a week, and with the weather and the rest of the country, our numbers are going to grow. So we work very hard, 100% voluntary organization, distributing non-perishable groceries, and I love it.
Well, thank you so much, Leslie, for all your good work. Next, Wendy Coleman Levine, or Levin, actually, I think, is a passionate, entire- Next, Wendy Coleman Levine, or Levin, actually, I think, is a passionate, entirest advocate for the homeless. And I'm proud to say she earned her doctorate at UCLA. Go Bruins! And since 2009, Wendy served as a member of the Home for Good Business Leaders Task Force on Homelessness, which aims to find permanent supportive housing for the chronic and veteran homeless, among others. She's also curated a crucial exhibition, Faces of Homelessness, which is currently at Encino's Valley Beth Shalom. She was co-editor of a documentary, Struggle in Paradise, about the homeless of Venice Beach, and have done, has done a number of other things in that vein, and we thank her for all her good work in that arena. Wendy?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's an absolute honor to be here, and I would just say that, just as every adorable animal deserves a home, so too do our homeless neighbors. And I want to thank those of you who have been so supportive of Home for Good and our efforts to end chronic and veteran homelessness by 2016. So, thank you very, very much for all your great work and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. And now, Armin Satzmeri and his wife Marilyn, who is here with Armin today, are West Hollywood residents. And during a typical week, Armin might spend 20 hours volunteering, helping people tutoring at the Jewish Federation's Literacy Program, Correa LA, and at Let's Read, another volunteer tutor literacy program. He also serves as a court-appointed special advocate at the Ed Edelman Children's Court as a volunteer at Five Acres, which promotes the safety and welfare of at-risk children and their families, and a number of other organizations and initiatives. And we appreciate his good work and thank him, and would like to ask him to speak for a moment as well.
At a breakfast meeting organized by Supervisor Ridley Thomas, the head of the Cal State Northridge African-American Studies, announced two very startling facts. One being 60% of the incoming students cannot pass a proficiency test in English and math. And even more startling, 90% of the African-American students coming in in the freshman class cannot pass the reading and math tests. I also started helping kids read because we were told 60% of the children in LA school system cannot, are reading below grade average. These children and young adults are our future. If we don't do something about it, the city is doomed. It's an honor being here, and it's a great honor being honored by the Jewish Journal. Thank you all.
For the past seven years, Leon Schrab, and I apologize if I mangled your name, has been volunteering every week at Bet Cedic Legal Services, where he conducts intake interviews in Russian with Holocaust survivors who are applying for Holocaust reparations. Leon's kindly helped for them is an amazing gift for people whose lives have been burdened with horror, and so he has, he lightens that burden with his friendship and his spirit of generosity. He also volunteers several days a week at the County of Los Angeles Department of Consumer Affairs as a legal counselor. Leon?
Thank you for everybody, and a big honor representing my community, Bet Cedic Legal Services, and thank you for Jewish Journal for giving me opportunity, asking you, it's, America gave opportunity to all my community, adopted and merged in the American life. But unfortunately, still exist people who Holocaust survivors, and they need to continue to help because a lot of bureaucracy in our former USSR country, and we try to help them. Thank you for everyone. Thank you.
And lastly, I very briefly want to acknowledge the mensches who weren't able to make it here. Eldad Hager cofounded the, the dog rescue group Hope for Paws, and he and his wife Audrey have rescued and found hopes for thousands of dogs since 2001, which our council president has done as well right here. Jacob Siegel is the head of the Southern California Israel Chamber of Commerce, and with his group of dedicated volunteers, he helps Israeli entrepreneurs look for capital and expertise in Southern California, creating business relationships and many jobs here in the Southern California area. Maya Steinberg, who is now a 17-year-old high school senior, started Purses for Peace as a bat mitzvah project when she was 12. Her group cleans and resells used handbags to raise funds for Jewish World Watch, an anti-genocide organization based in Encino, which I've worked closely with for a number of years. And Zalea Naim is a San Fernando Valley-based Iranian Jewish volunteer who started a Jewish emergency fund among, among many other things. So, we recognize all of them. And so many mensches, and we have certificates for all of them, but I'd like to close by giving this plaque to the Jewish Journal as well. And it reads, "The City of Los Angeles celebrates the Jewish Journal for its remarkable journalism and its revered community leadership, and furthermore thanks the Jewish Journal for its annual mensch list. By honoring heroically dedicated individuals who have selflessly and compassionately helped others, the Jewish Journal inspires us all. Through steadfast ways and caring deeds, the Jewish Journal has made Los Angeles a better place in which to live." So, thank you to all of you.
Again, let's give them one more round of applause. And as I'm calling, Mr. Sadio, if you're ready to come to the, the podium to begin your presentations, let's do a quick vote on item five. We're gonna have a vote for reconsideration. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now, we will actually vote on the item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours, sir.
Happy New Year. Thank you to ALAs Jing for their performance. Council members, we're here welcoming this year's Miss Los Angeles Chinatown and her court, as well as the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, to celebrate the official date of the Chinese Lantern Festival. This is the Chinese New Year of the Horse, 4712, which began 15 days ago on January 31st, when we lit thousands and thousands and thousands of fireworks in Chinatown. Today is the Lantern Festival, which is one of the most important of five traditional festivals in China. It's celebrated by Chinese-Americans throughout the United States. The Lantern Festival is always on the 15th day of the first month of the lunar calendar. This day brings the Chinese New Year festivals to their peak and also marks the end of the New Year celebration. It happens to fall on the 14th, which coincidentally, as we all know, is Valentine's Day. Thank you, Councilmember Martinez, for sharing your heart. Yes, thank you. On March 1st, from noon to 10:00 PM, Angelinos will be able to celebrate the Lantern Festival, hosted by the Chinese American Museum in the Pueblo, with engaging community booths, live entertainment, music, arts crafts, food trucks, and more. Members, this is an ongoing festival. It's been very exciting. In the first district in Chinatown, we've had parades, fireworks, great cuisine, the new fusion cuisine that is a rave throughout Los Angeles, the state and the nation. And we are gonna have a 5K run. I invite all of you to join me as we engage in some healthy activities. But before we do that, I'm very flattered and honored to present Chester Chang, who is the president of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Chester, please join us for a second.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do you have to say a word?
Yeah, okay, yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Gil, Gil Six Zero. And on behalf of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, I'd be very honored to be here today and give us opportunity to work with all the cities of Los Angeles. We're a great city and we're a unique city because diversity of all the cultures together. And I'm very appreciative of the city to give us the continued to promoting the Chinese culture. The one thing on my terms, I'd be, I'd need to be explaining about the Chinese Chamber of Commerce is since 1955, is the 59 year and today. And I'd be the terms for, this four term on my presidency, and it's the number eight year. But one thing I learned from the past, I really understand is teamwork is very important for everyone. And in Los Angeles, we don't have any conflict about the culture. We work together. I very love this city. So, hopefully, our Chinatown and our court and everybody to work together and make the city more proud and very important for the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester.
Thank you.
And then, I've had the pleasure of working with these young boys and girls here, little Miss Vilaine Williams, little Prince Jacob Venko, little Queen Keely Kimiko Ing, and little King Davis Wong, and Miss Friendship Betty Lam, and we have a certificate for them. Who's gonna come up here? One of you's gotta come up here and take this.
Yeah, the girl, the kid coming up.
There you go. Look at you.
Yeah, I'll get it in the front, right?
Okay, go to the front. And finally, let me introduce the fourth princess, Queen Rue Jennifer Jiang, third princess, Deanna Lee, second princess, Dorothy Wong, first princess, Evelyn Chan, and the queen, the quite photogenic, someone that I've spent a few days with recently, lighting firecrackers throughout Chinatown, riding in floats and parades, the very lovely, wow representing of Chinatown, Miss Katrina Lee.
Thank you so much.
A pleasure. You wanna say hello and thank you?
Good morning.
In fact, let me interrupt the queen. I hate to do that, but I have Mr. Labange, Mr. Sadio, that would like to say a couple of words.
First, I want to salute Mr. Sadio, who does such a great job bringing everybody together, which is so good. Give Gil a big hand right now. And invite all of Los Angeles. I missed the parade because I was up at Paso Robos checking the water levels mid-state. But I'm so proud of the run that's coming up and all the work, and if every one of the queen and princess say what school that you go to, it'd be an inspiration to us of where you graduated from. But I also want to give a shout-out to Kwanjo. Kwanjo, China, is our sister city. Mayor Bradley, Tom Bradley, John Ferraro, went there over 30 years ago and made this relationship, which is so important. And just this week, Mr. President, you would like delegation from Hong Kong came to help promote trade, international trade, with Mr. Buscayeno as our champion on. So, I thank you all, but especially thank you, Gil. It's a great place. I love Yang Chow. And the only thing I ask, Yang Chow gets a little outlet in Alvera Street because it's a little close to the City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Good morning, and thank you so much again, Councilmember President, and fellow council members that have joined us here today. We are truly grateful for this opportunity to meet with each and every one of you, as we are the next generation, as a melting pot of so many cultures and backgrounds. I think this is an amazing opportunity, so thank you. My name is Katrina Lee. I am the 2014 queen, and I graduated from USC. Fight on. But I also wanted to thank also the Chinese Chamber of Commerce and Gil Sadio for just giving us this opportunity again. It really is just the mix of cultures that bring us together. As I said, we are the next generation, and for us to come to these events and meet even with the, the previous people who came up here from the Jewish Journal, I think it's an honor really to learn from each other. We are the next generation, and who knows, maybe we can be sitting... We are the next generation, and who knows, maybe we can be sitting right here in a couple of years. And so it is an honor for us. And aside from this crown and from our dresses, we are young women. We are encouraged. We are hungry to make a difference. And that's why we have myself to represent the Chinese American community and Los Angeles, and I have my court as my team to help me. Thank you so very much. Happy Chinese New Year and Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Councilmember Martinez, there may be a future seatmate for you. So you could see how exciting it's been to work and celebrate Chinese New Year. I'm very proud to be the councilmember of the First District. It is a very exciting and dynamic district, and you could hear from the presentation how optimistic we are, how forward-looking we are, and how excited we are for the future. So colleagues, please, thank you very much for your time and your attention, and please join us at the Firecracker Run on the 26th? 23rd? Next week? Please join us for the Firecracker Run next week on the 23rd and the cycling on the 22nd.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, everybody. Thank you so much.
Again, congratulations. Okay, members, we're going to vote for reconsideration on item four. This vote is on reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. Corretts, it's my understanding you have an introduction you'd like to make?
Oh, yes. Could I? I have a brief introduction I'd like to make and a delightful one on Valentine's Day. Today, we're joined by Milton and Frances Goodman, who recently celebrated their 70th wedding anniversary, and I thought that was a lovely cause for rejoicing on this particular Valentine's Day. So let's give them a hand as they make their way up here. Milton and Frances are joined by Rabbi Meyer Schmukler, and I have a special certificate for you, and I know that everyone here on the council and in the chambers wishes you congratulations on your 70th wedding anniversary and very Happy Valentine's Day and for many years to come. So let's give them a big hand. Would you like to say something?
I don't know.
Okay.
So, Mr. Corretts? You better than that.
Well, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if I got asked, we could reconsider item number one? Let's reconsider item number one. Over the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. We have some cards on item one. Could I take it right in front of us? It's right in front of us now, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Arnold Sachs from Lenox, California. Arnold, are you still here? Okay. Hi, John, how are you?
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sachs. This again, it's a very simple problem. I believe part of this item mentions the ability, I lost the word here, the means to, for somebody to live in a house, the house being habitable. Habitable. So the use of public resources to go out to answer these complaints, yet nobody has raised a complaint about foreclosed property. And again, although he's not here today, Mr. Kocorian mentioned, we're already, the city is facing a $200 million deficit. How can you raise funds for the general fund because that's where this money goes? $1,000 a day versus nickels and dimes. The council chases nickels and dimes.
Next speaker, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.org or Twitter account is @HollywoodDems, capital H with two D's. Yes, you're doing a good job here. I want every damn nickel and every damn dime collected. And here, the council's doing a good, remember, I, when I get up here, you don't know whether I'm going to slash you or I'm going to stroke you. And here, I'm stroking you because you are constantly, these liens or nuisance abatement costs, somebody has to pay them. It's $719.26. It's not 26 cents. It's $719 at 14759 West Lake State Avenue, and I'm asking you to get that money. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman?
Yeah, we really need these barriers. Folks of Los Angeles, as you see, there are many barriers that we're interrupted by, but I'm going to keep this to one minute. Abuse of government funds. When we say to the public, yes, we can convert our garage by building in safety standards. Is that correct? Somebody quote me, Mr. Riley Thomas. Can we convert our garage into a home? Because if this is the case, all you Angelinos, convert your garage for homeless people. Allow a homeless person in your neighborhood to occupy a space to be called a home as County Supervisor Mike Riley has done, and Building and Safety has taken no action. We want order. We want respect, and we want something ethically done at every level of Building and Safety. For without any due process, you are causing robbery and grief to people you harm with liens. Thank you.
All right, no other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Next item, please.
Item number two called Special for Cards.
Continued consideration of hearing relative to the application for the determination of public convenience of the necessity for alcohol sales. Man, why do you have all that stupid wording just to say we want to let people drink more alcohol? Come on. You don't have to go into all that red tape just to say we want a society full of drunks paying the rent so we can take it, so we can put liens on the house and take the house and recycle it and drive people homeless. But let them all have their alcohol out on the streets, and when they're pushing their little wagon, we'll go and tell, take their junk. We'll take their junk and tell them you cannot live on the street, you cannot live on a tree, you cannot live in a house, you cannot live in the mountains, you cannot live anywhere. What a stupid, fucked up society we have. Oh, I said a bad word. Well, your actions are a lot worse than my words, believe me. Your actions drive people homeless, and you are a bunch of criminals. The whole government is a bunch of criminals because you don't change the law.
He is not talking about this item. City attorneys, inform us, you got to stay on the subject, Mr. Akala.
The subject is, we keep doing things to mess everybody up instead of helping.
Next speaker, John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential. Let's get it straight. Liquor license, CVS Pharmacy, 5837 South Central Avenue. All the South LA politicians believe that their, Mr. Price, Mr. Parks, they believe that there's racism, that African Americans do not have enough liquor licenses in their neighborhood. This is what it says here, for convenience and necessity. So it's inconvenient and unnecessary for African Americans. They just can't, sometimes they have to walk 100, 150 feet to find an, and folks, I don't have to tell the black community out there, who do you think owns these places? Who is selling you this alcohol? The same people that sold the alcohol to the American Indians, the white man. And this is about black politicians getting on their knees and doing the Lewinsky thing to the CBS and these other corporations and turning your neighborhood into crap. Let me tell you right now, as a white man, if CBS wanted to put a liquor license over in the West Side, the white people would stop it and the white politicians would stop it. Now, you can say, what does John Walsh know about racism? Hey, I'm a white man. We invented it. And I'm telling you right now, this is another, and I want to finish by saying, Joe Buscaino said it causes hit and run. LA has a distinction in being the hit and run capital of the country. Who said that? Joe Buscaino. And what I'm saying is, psychotic ravings of John Walsh last week is now what Buscaino is saying. Hit and runs in South LA brought to you by Price and Parks.
Public comment is complete. Let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Item number three, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number three called Special for Cards. There is motion 3A, Kocorian and Buscaino, that has been circulated and is now before you for consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to do the public comment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Joshua Kaplan?
My name is Joshua Kaplan. I represent Payam Sahi, who is the, I do something wrong?
You're good, please. Continue.
Okay. I represent Payam Sahi, who is the applicant for a PCN determination. He successfully applied for a conditional use permit CUB granted on May 24, 2013 by the zoning administrator, who in his decision at page 13, found that the application met PCN. We are before you seeking that determination again. Indeed, the area is over-concentrated with licenses, but as we know, PCN is the exception. If you find public convenience or necessity, then the over-concentration doesn't matter. Why is there public convenience and necessity? Because this would be the sole location in the community for a one-stop availability for the community to purchase convenience items, beer and wine, and motor vehicle fuel. There is no other location within miles of the community that has that facility. If this is allowed, it would decrease traffic, decrease trips, and it has already been conditioned to preclude any adverse community impact. The determination of the zoning administrator found all of these things that I just said. I have filed with the city clerk a petition signed by 142 members of the community. Yesterday was sent to the council office that are in support of this application. Four of those people are here today, as is the applicant. We're asking you to make the determination, as the ZA did, that there is public convenience and necessity based upon case law authority, which provides that public convenience and necessity is an elastic concept, but it simply means providing the community something that's not already there, something that is unique. This meets that criteria because the community does not have any one-stop location. This would be the very first one.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Clerk, could you restate what's before us?
Yes, sir. Before council is motion 3A. It is a motion to deny the application for public convenience or necessity.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next speaker is Albert Mancu. Is that correct? Manoku? Thank you.
How you doing? I'm one of his customers at the store. It's very convenient because you don't find that uniquely where that you can find a gas station where you can purchase any beverage or anything like that. So it makes it one-stop, convenient. Also, it's better for a trip because you can fill up gas at the same time and get what you need for your beverages. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Borrios?
Yeah, the same thing. It's very convenient. Like I told gentlemen, I wanted to be here to support him. He didn't ask me to, so hopefully you guys go through with it.
Thank you, Manuel. Craig, I want to pronounce your name correctly, so I'm going to ask you to help me. Please come forward.
It's Sarah Goza, sir.
Thank you, Craig.
Pretty much just restating what the other two are saying. It really is convenient. I've seen many cars pile up just around the block trying to get into either 7-Eleven or another liquor, and then there's always a couple of close calls. It's really just more convenient for people to just go, you know, put gas, because I always see them go from across the street over, and it's just really just more convenient. Thank you.
Thank you. Gavik, if you could please help me on your very special last name. Thank you, Gavik.
Hi, President. My name is Gavik.
And your last name for the record?
Bogosian Malhamin.
Thank you.
They send everybody asking, we don't have a gas station over there, like the liquor store over there. Everybody asking the same that me. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavik. Mr. Akala?
Oh, it would be so more convenient to have more alcohol right there at the gas station so we can drink and drive. Wouldn't that be so cool? I know. You know, gasoline, you need it because you got us running from one place to another just to survive, not even to have a decent wage. And, you know, we need gumdrops and candy, and we need all those things. But alcohol, we don't need alcohol anywhere. But, you know, what happened to Al Capone during prohibition? We know what happened, right? The will of the people decided that we should have alcohol in this society. But other drugs, like, you know, that guy that just died with the needle in his, nah, those drugs are bad, but alcohol is okay. Alcohol is okay. Do you realize our thinking is not very clear? We are not thinking very clearly, and we're keeping people homeless.
He is not talking about the same. All right, thank you, Mr. Akala. Mr. Herman is next. Mr. Herman?
Excuse me, folks, just a little alcohol for the feel of the mind. But isn't it discrimination or racist when you can put in minority areas an alcohol license? But isn't it discrimination or racist when you can put in minority areas an alcohol license for a convenience, for a necessity, for conditional use? How bad does it get? How desperate is the city of Los Angeles to permit alcohol license still when Jose Weezer is known to give out permit license for all you who've not only killed people on a bicycle, not all those of you who killed people that were pedestrians, walkers?
Address the issue, please.
This has to do with alcohol. The consumption of alcohol is a drug, Mr. Speaker. It is a drug, but it can be used in the right manner, the way you drink your wine and I drink my beer. God is good and the world loves beer, right? So the important issue here is this. African American minorities, minorities such as myself, other, are impacted by the negativity of what alcohol does to our communities. Put them in the West Side, because this one talks about Van Nuys, this one talks about South Central, and I'm sure, come to Boyle Heights, we have a lot of bars, thanks to Mr. Weezer, but let me stick to, let me go back to topic because they don't want me to talk about alcohol. But yet, at 2300, 2600, smoke shops on Caesar Chavez Avenue, and we had a killing on Caesar Chavez Avenue due to alcohol, a brawl in a bar. But don't worry, folks, all you tourists who love Los Angeles, all you Angelenos that like to drink in the local bars, it's safe, we're protected. We need more permits to allow alcohol to kill us all. But if you're a good drinker, a sober drinker, do it moderately. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh. Again, Mr. Clerk, what's before us is to deny the applicants. Correct, Mr. Clerk? Thank you.
That's correct, sir.
Mr. Walsh. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This item proves what I said about number two. I said that in white areas, the homeowner groups stop alcohol licenses, and the white politicians follow their orders. Look where this is, Oxnard Street in Van Nuys. The white people, the white homeowners got it together and stopped alcohol. But when the black homeowners go to the black politicians who are owned, Curran and Parks, who keep the headcount, they won't even-
Please address, please, Mr., hold this time. Please address the chair.
I am addressing you. Are you black? Let me tell you right now, you owe me 10 seconds. I'm telling you right now, these two black men voted for a liquor license in their own neighborhood, and now they're gonna vote against one in the black neighborhood. Who are they? And I'm gonna finish by the famous civil rights song, "If you're white, that's all right. If you're brown, you can stick around, but if you're black, stay back, stay back, stay back."
All right, that completes that comment on this issue here.
Hey, sergeants, could somebody go wipe the podium off? Other people will have to, can we have somebody clean that?
Okay, Mr. Clerk, restate what's before us.
Mr. President, item number three, we have motion Krikorian Buscagno to deny the application.
And the councilman of this, he wants an aye vote. So here we go. So for the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so ordered. Next item, item number four, we have one card. We don't have to take it, but we acknowledge Arnold Sacks. Let's, all right, so we hold number four. All right, councilmen. Gilbert Sadio, the first district, has gotta give some very special attention to a man who used to be in the old 13th district and the old 4th district, but he moved to his district. He used to be on Hyperion Avenue, if I remember right, Bob, but here we go, Gil. Pick your time.
Stop to the floor. Okay, I'm not going anywhere. Mr. President, and councilmembers, you know, and everyone knows, it seems, Bob Baker. Everyone knows him. He's known for his marinets right down the street. He's got his little theater and those incredible, incredible marinets, and they range from dancing robots to dancing frogs to eggs-laying chickens. He's got the whole range, and I can't imagine how many thousands of Angelenos over the years have been, lots of them, have been entertained and motivated and inspired, both to the theater, to performance, to art, because of his shows. His shows have been in Las Vegas, Toronto, New York, Germany. You got a passport fatter than a travel agent, and you've even performed on Navy ships. And now-
Submarine.
Submarine.
A nudist colony.
On a nudist colony. We didn't, well, that might be appropriate for today. So he was the president of the Puppet Guild, governor of the Television Arts Sciences Animation Branch, and he continues to sit on the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences. He is a young 90-years-old today, right?
You're not Mexican. You're not Mexican. That's about that much.
Smile here for these guys.
Ah, great.
So everybody knows Bob. He's, I pass by his theater almost every day, for sure every week I go by the theater.
Well, thank you. A lot of people go by, they look, they say, I wonder what goes on in there?
Yes, they do.
And they finally stop in and say, oh, my goodness, we didn't realize we were gonna go back 25, 30 years.
Fascinating, yes.
I want to say one thing, if I may. I've lived in Los Angeles for 90 years, in the same house, which I've been told that's impossible. Nobody lives anyplace for 90 years, but I have. My mother brought me home from the hospital in a house that they had just finished, building they had just finished in 1923. I came home in '24. I've lived there all my life. I've loved Los Angeles. I've gone to school in Los Angeles. But now I've been told to get out. I've been forced out of my house by the new owners. They say get out in three days. The court got me until the end of this month. I'm going to have to move to Monrovia. I will no longer be a citizen here in Los Angeles. I'll miss Los Angeles tremendously. But I listened to people that promised me a better life as I got older, but they didn't tell the truth. But anyway, thank you, Los Angeles. I appreciate this so much. It'll go on our wall by the other ones that we've had from the city. Thank you again from the bottom of my heart. I love you dearly. Thank you, Robert.
There you go.
I don't know which way to look. This was Coco. He was the first puppet that we manufactured about 25, 30, 50 years ago, and we sold him to Bullock's Wilshire, the most famous store in the world. And we were on the fourth floor for, I don't know how many, well, for 10 years, selling up these puppets. Again, thank you, thank you. Hey, Bob, thank you for all you did for the children of Los Angeles, all the school buses that you've had to come to your theater and your studio. A great job, and he's a great graduate of Hollywood High School, so good job. Go Sheiks. Bob Baker.
Mr. President, who worked at Bullock's Wilshire selling shirts and ties?
You did.
Thank you, Bob.
And who designed Bullock's Wilshire? Same guy who designed Union Station, the Coliseum, and this city hall, John Parkinson. Mr. Clerk, that was a very nice presentation for someone who's so special. And Mr. O'Farrell, I see your name popped up. Bob, you got a little message coming out here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Bob Baker, happy birthday, first of all. And second of all, thank you for giving the children of Echo Park by the thousands and several generations of them happiness over the years with what you've done. And your legacy will live on, and I just want to thank you because I've been to some of your shows and seen the magic that you give to children and families. So thank you for all you're doing, and happy birthday to you.
Good job there, Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you so much. Mr. Corretts, we're gonna go to item number four, if it's okay with you, Mr. Corretts. So, Mr. Clerk, this is what's before us right now, item four. And we have Mr. Corretts right here on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's really critical that we do more to make electric vehicles our mode of choice in LA, and I think by doing what we're doing in Los Angeles with this motion, we take a big step in the right direction. So I thank Mr. Blumenfield, Mr. Fuentes for bringing this forward. I do want to have staff answer one question, so if we could have staff come up.
Engineer Moon, come up here. One of the best engineers Water Power has, is very effective. Do you take the center table? For the record, state your position and name, DWP.
I'm Marvin Moon, Director of Power System Engineering for LA Water and Power.
And I want to be sure we're thinking forward as we're doing this, so I want to ask staff how these electric vehicle charging stations and electric vehicles charging from them will be used as part of a citywide plan for a smart grid.
So the question is, how, how electric vehicles used in the smart grid?
Yeah, or are we planning on doing that?
Yes.
If so, how?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, we have a program, our smart grid demo program, electric vehicles is a key component of it. Electric vehicles are great, you know, it's a great new load and so on, it cleans the air, but, you know, we have to make sure that folks charge at the right time. You know, to that extent, we have a lot of capacity in the evenings, and we can handle this. But, you know, if we've got to send the right messages, either through our rates or through price signals, we also have to integrate our renewable power. For example, most of our wind power comes at night, and so to the extent we have cars that are charging at night, that's the place the energy can go. In fact, in LA, 80% of the charging is done in the home, 89%, and 80% of that is off-peak, so that's what we want to encourage. But moving forward, what we're gonna see is, as our renewables get more, get more aggressive and our percentages go up, there may become times when we actually have over-generation. And so, to the extent we have to have a place for that power to go, electric vehicles are another means we can do that. And so, there's terms flying around like smart charging, managed charging, and the idea is that you can have chargers that can tell the car when to charge at the right time and would help keep our costs low, keep the customers' costs low, and it helps us keep our system stable.
And I understand we have a smart grid demonstration project, which is in the works?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we have a report on the progress of that program to Energy and Environment at an appropriate time.
Very good, and I think the Chairman of Energy and Environment, Mr. Fuentes, will nod his head, approval. That sounds good. Mr. Moon, you're available?
I am, sir.
Very good, super.
So, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Moon, thank you very much. Keep that power coming, clean and green. All right, no other speakers on the queue. So open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Item six, called Special for Cards.
Ms. Ramirez here? Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. Don't just remove the few scattered properties from rent escrow account programs who are noncompliant of several habitability issues, but hold all high-rise buildings, homeowners' association, West LAPD, the LAPD, and all council members, i.e. Herb Weston and the LA City Attorneys, who continuously and ethically sabotage taxpayers and defrauding the LA Housing Department code enforcement and fail to honor citizens' arrests and give citations to the criminal felons, crackheads, junkies, and Latino-Hispanic gangbangers for breeding an environment and residences and communities of hate-mongering hostility, high crime rates, and horrendous, toxic urban blight throughout the city of Los Angeles. So again, we are putting you on notice to curtail these problems. It's obvious that law enforcement has not been able to combat these incessant problems, so we need to get a task force like Homeland Security and/or other task force agencies that will amalgamate together and unite those resources and help combat the crimes, bring back quality of life to American and American citizens and Los Angelinos.
Mr. President, she's not talking about the REAP.
All right, that completes your comments. Thank you so much. Arnold Sacks, Lenox, California.
Yes, thank you. Good, good morning, Arnold Sacks. My concern here as part of this item on the agenda is the actions of the code enforcement unit. Now, I believe a couple of weeks ago, again, Mr. Weezer got up part of a discussion, he asked somebody at the center table about sending letters to the property owners, and somebody was on this side of the barrier, mentioned that somebody had called in a complaint about his graffiti. And so, you might have been reading in the newspaper about, again, somebody who did some building without a building permit. They did some renovations without a building permit.
Mr. President, this is regarding the REAP program, not the building and safety lien.
All right, I know, that's Mr. Sacks, he likes to speak freely. Stay on the subject of the address of the location. Continue.
The code enforcement unit action, it states here that the Housing Department, they have a code enforcement unit. Is having a building permit part of a code enforcement unit something they would investigate? It's not on this item, it's what they do. Call-in complaints are on this item. Somebody calls in a complaint, does it have to be a call-in complaint to make this list of items? Or do I, should I call in a complaint about the blue line and the graffiti on the buildings? Is that a necessity that the complaints be registered that way? Or can somebody be riding on the blue line and just open your eyes?
Said, you give me your blue line complaints, I'll forward them to Art Leahy.
Oh, I'm sure.
I will.
You know what that'll do.
All right.
And again, we go back to the letters that were sent out to the property owner, or should they be sent to the registered property owner? Because again, you have a lot of complaints about, and Mr. Weezer mentioned, he has that problem with the county. Just looking for some clarification for the public.
Mr. Walsh, next speaker. Pass, thank you. Mr. Herman.
Dino, let's clarify this. Rent escrow was designed to regulate only certain areas of landlord-tenant relations regarding rental property. The ordinance deals with registration of rental units, allowable rent increases, the 12 legal reasons for eviction, and relocation assistance for certain no-fault evictions. Get it, Mr. City Attorney? The following information is provided by the Los Angeles Housing Department as a courtesy to the residents of Los Angeles and is in no way to be construed. You're interrupting, Mr. Corretts. Sit down, please.
Mr. Corretts.
Sit down.
Hold, hold, don't. Sergeant, tell the speaker to stop. Hold the time, clerk, Mr. Corretts.
Number one, he hasn't said a word about the specific property. Number two, he just told me not to interfere with his speaking, which I don't think is in order for him. I think he should be held to the topic at hand of which he has said nothing after 45 seconds.
I agree with you. I'm just gonna take my cue from City Attorney. We're gonna start the clock right now, continue on the specific item. Thank you.
So the legality here is this. Who's liable when it comes to protect your rights, when it comes to habability? It should be the city of Los Angeles, and at the same token and matter, owners of properties that rent must keep them beautiful, clean, safe- that rent must keep them beautiful, clean, safe, and don't forget, fire alarms are most important because fire alarms help keep our homes that are rented to all of us Angelinos safe.
Thank you very much. That completes his comments.
Forty-three seconds.
Juan Icala, your time is up. Thank you, the clerk just did for me. Juan Icala. One minute, Juan.
What can I say? We have a totally stupid real estate system, and why are the cities regulating where people live? Why? Why can't we people be our own landlords and not have to deal with all these landlord-tenant problems? In this case, the resolution for removing the property, hey, you're always eating there, Mr. Coretts, you're like...
Hey, 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 Mr. Icala.
He is not...
Thank you, completed the comment. No other speakers. Excuse me, Sergeant, inform the man not to call out names like that. Sergeant, thank you. Mr. Clerk, no other speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Next item.
Item seven, call special for cards.
Mr. Sachs?
Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Mr. Speaker, Mr. President, I will be talking about the trust fund and the administrative code portion of this trust fund and the ability to amend the administration of this trust fund. I will not be talking specifically about the Ernani Bernardi Scholarship, but I will be talking about these steps, administrative code 5.439.1, to amend the trust fund. And the reason I'll talk about those is because there was a story in the newspaper, an editorial from the DWP Union Head about a trust fund that was created by the City Council, except it wasn't a trust fund, it was a nonprofit that was created by the City Council. And here you are, taking action to amend this trust fund. Now, how is this trust fund funded? Is it funded through public donations? Is it funded through public payment? Do they get money that the public pays to the general fund, and then it's taken and put into this trust fund? It's donations. So, then why is the DWP Safety Trust Fund nonprofit-whatever funded with bill payments? How does that work? And here you have an administrative code. Don't you have an administrative code for that? Yes, you created it, so why don't you enforce it? No, we can't because it's DWP. We don't do that. Make your mind up. If you're giving to this nonprofit, write it off.
Mr. Walsh, item seven, sir.
Pass.
Pass. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Next item.
Item eight, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, item eight. Mr. Walsh, you have one minute. Thank you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As you know, for a couple of years, I've gotten up and said, quote, "L.A. has the distinction of being the hit-and-run capital of the world, of the country," and Mr. Buscaino just said it in the L.A. Times, copycat, but it's welcome. Let me tell you what you're doing here. There is no coincidence, and I'm saying this to the world, when you come here, you can get hit by a car. We have the most, the highest incidence concentration of convenience store liquor licenses, and we have the most hit-and-run. I have asked about these rewards. How many have you given out? How many are there? I asked for a reward report. Zion asked for a reward report. This is a joke. This whole reward report is a joke. It's just a license for you to spill more blood. HollywoodHighlands.org. Viva alcohol!
Juan Icala, out of time. Your card will be on the record. Mr. Herman, you're out of time. Your card will be on the record. So, we're going to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. So ordered. Next item, Mr. Clerk, forthwith on that item.
Mr. President, that brings us to general public comment.
Arnold Sachs?
It's not a topic, Arnold.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. Would you stop clapping? Give me a break, please. Couple things. Interesting item in today's agenda, Mr. Kaplan, who is the attorney for the applicant in item number three, mentioned the boundaries for public convenience or necessity, that if it's a unique situation, you can meet the public convenience and necessity threshold you're in, if it meets a unique situation. So, I'm wondering, can you have a marijuana clinic slash gas station slash liquor store slash crack house slash whorehouse slash, which would be a unique situation in most neighborhoods, meeting the public need for necessity in most neighborhoods? Or is there an ability to address that ordinance, the public need for necessity, something for neighborhood councils to look into? And then, in today's Daily Breeze, and I don't know if it comes in the Daily News, there was another story regarding the port of L.A. and the port of Long Beach, and it mentions the amount of money that was spent on clean utilities, something like $40 million for utilities at Los Angeles, $30 million in Los Angeles. But it doesn't say who paid it, it just said it was spent. So, I'm just wondering, if the ships that come into the port of Los Angeles tie into those utilities, they're paying the city $30 million a year? You know, it's fascinating because a couple of weeks ago, there was a story about the port of Los Angeles and how they had cost overruns in their projects. Nobody approved the cost overruns, yet they had the money to do it. The port of Los Angeles and DWP, there's a happy coincidence.
Doug Haynes, is Doug here? Doug, who does a good job at his neighborhood picking up, cleaning up. I see you on Saturday mornings walking down Fountain Avenue, Doug.
Thank you, and thank you, Tom, for getting those signs up. We appreciate it a great deal. My name's Doug Haynes, I'm with the La Mirada, I have a neighborhood association. The reason I came here today is to exhaust our administrative remedies on current litigation we have against the city of Los Angeles. It involves the demolition of the old spaghetti factory building, part of the Sunset Gordon Project on Tuesday. The Central Area Planning Commission unanimously determined that the demolition was illegal and that CIM did not have the ability to go forward with a condition of approval that was important for part of that project. So, as part of the exhaustion of our administrative remedies, I'm asking that the other two parts of our appeal to building and safety, and then the Director of Planning, be Section 245 and brought before council. Those involve the subsequent issuance of permits for the project, even though the demolition was illegal, and also the partial demolition permit that was issued. So, Mitchell Farrell, I would appreciate if you would consider that. Again, this is for the Sunset Gordon Project at 5929 Sunset Boulevard. It's case number DIR 2013 2462. We go to trial in July. The judge has already stated they were likely to prevail. Thank you very much.
John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, and speaking for Joe Buscaino and myself, speaking to you, to the world, and L.A., the distinction of being the hit-and-run capital of the country. Not the world! We're edged out by Baghdad. They're number one. We're number two. Life is a little more precious here, but not by much. Okay, if you go to my website, we had the bee gate the other day. Everybody up here has not contradicted what was said up here by one of the bee entrepreneurs, that children, it's okay for children to play with bees. Now, I'm saying it isn't. Now, you claim children are watching this, and I want to say to kids, please, don't listen to the City Council. Bees are not playthings. Come to our website and see some of the horrible pictures of what happens to you when there's a bee sting reaction, particularly this African-American gentleman, that's JWalshConfidential. Come to Hollywood, come to the corner of Yucca and Argyle, and see that they are already trench digging for the Hollywood earthquake wall. It's on my website. You can see the 60-foot mountain of dirt. All of the dirt is wafting all over the area, causing valley fever. And remember, ABG, anybody but gruel for anything, in particular for Waxman Seep. She's a professional candidate, she can't stop running, she has candidacy addiction. She needs to be treated for it. And vote, hold your nose, and vote for baby-faced Ted Lieu. Of course, anybody but gruel for Congress. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Icala. Mr. Coretts, hold on, Mr. Icala.
I just want to say for the record, no one on City Council suggested that children play with bees, nor does anybody doubt that people have significant bee allergies. I was once stung myself and had my right leg paralyzed for about three weeks, so it is significant. However, without bees, there are many that think that the human race would also vanish from the planet, and so, since the city of Los Angeles seems to be very hospitable to bees for reasons that probably relate to pesticide use, it's our responsibility to continue to protect them.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Icala, you're, go ahead, please.
To be or not to be, that is the question. That reminds me, Mr. Coretts, reminds me of the story of the three little pigs, John Coretts, Joe Coretts, and the other Coretts. They were always eating in City Council. Anyway, and interrupting the speakers, well, that's what makes a pig a pig, it's an interrupting animal. Anyway, I would like to remind City Council that any time anybody dies out in the streets because of the lack of services, housing, et cetera, it is City Council's responsibility. And I remind all politicians around the world that somehow you manage to take the power away from the people, but the people do not want to raise weapons against you because you have more weapons than they do, or you have the weapons of the system, which is the federal judges, the state judges, the city judges, and all the legalities that you put upon people. Anyway, the main concern that I have is that with all your legalities, you're keeping everybody homeless. Anybody that rents a darn little apartment is not a landlord, is not a homeowner, is just another slave to the system, which is, let's give our money to some stupid landlord, whoever that is, the city or a private entity. Stupid!
Harrison, is Harrison here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Kelvin Harrison?
Sifu Kelvin Berman Harrison, member of the South Korean-Chinese Kung-Fu Association, member of the BKF Karate Association under Master Steve Sanders, also a member of the NAACP. I'm also a relative of Dionne Warwick and Whitney Houston through my grandmother, Leona Drinkard. Addressing the President of the United States, my civil rights representatives, Honorable Reverend Jesse L. Jackson, Sr., and my local clergy, Bishop Ron C. Hill, my tithing parish, and all multicultural, multi-denomination clergies who have been aware for months. Now, here in Los Angeles, law enforcement, certain ones, and certain FBI and CIA agents have targeted me because of my past in San Luis Obispo, California, being a political prisoner of that town by corrupt, extreme city government and wealthy, closed-minded generational families that have multicultural citizens and families oppressed for many years. Honorable Reverend Jesse L. Jackson, Sr. has been aware to these tactics, and it would be the same for my apartment at 1018 West 57th Street here in Los Angeles, how the apartment manager named Oscar was entering my apartment illegally many times with his allies, destroying my furniture and implementing poisons into my vitamins and food. Reverend Jesse L. Jackson, Sr. office has toxicology reports. A bona fide witness tenant has seen this manager enter my apartment numerous times and she fears for her life. Los Angeles Chinatown Society as well, with their law enforcement allies, have been targeting me because the Chinese society in L.A. Chinatown don't like my Kung-Fu Chinese, Korean, black, and white martial arts teachers that I have been part of for 30 years. Albert Kwong targeted me in his hotel, the Best Western Hotel, and the post office in the Hotel Plaza, deliberately sabotaged my mail to Reverend Jesse L. Jackson, Sr. Reverend Jesse Jackson has evidence. Also, my life was threatened by a renegade Hopseong Tong thug. My Chinatown teachers, late Grandmaster Yijie, late Grandmaster Arcy Wong, and late Grandmaster York Wai Lu was members of the Hopseong Tong Benevolent Association. A hotel in Chinatown, the Best Western, was entered, also my hotel, excuse me, it must be over.
That completes your time. Have a nice weekend. Antonio Ramirez, the next speaker.
West Los Angeles Police Department enforced the rule of law, honor the citizen's arrest, issue citations where legally warranted, hand out valid police reports, and assess all vandalism and property damages. West Los Angeles Police Department, you have miserably failed to provide equal protection under the law, due process rights, and you arbitrarily choose who you will serve and protect. Furthermore, you have incited mob lynchings, bullying, further crimes, invasion of privacy, criminal harassment, and gang stalkings by this chronically noisy, unsafe, junky, and gang-infested full-service high-rise building located at 10535 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California 90024, called the Wilshire Marquee. And the following condo units are engaged in organized crime. They are Units 504 and Units Number 704 and 1604 NDK05, and the Latino gang-banging employees, Hector, Leonel, Misael, Luis, Lesvin, and Jose, and the unethical black gang-bangers employees, Arantena and AWAT, and the Iranian Criminal Ring. The Wilshire Marquis, a noisy, unsafe, full-service, high-rise building, whose homeowners' association, the rental owners, and the West Los Angeles Police Department, along with the dispatch, have failed to mitigate the criminal problems or curtail the public and private nuisances because they are, they do not engage in good faith and fair dealings. They believe that they are above the law, so sanction and arrest and fire Sergeants Walker, Duke, Mark Durrell, Chris Ragsdale, Abbott, Detective L. Smith, and Detective Keith Thomas, and Officer Kirkland, and Officer Barone, and Ed Al, and with no pensions. And with that, on a loving note, I'd love to wish my United States military veterans, and our aviators, and our pilots, and my dear Gillespie Daredevil pilots extraordinaire, and all my commercial airline pilots, God bless you, we love you.
Mr. Herman is our last public speaker. Mr. Herman.
Angelinos, Happy Valentine's Day, and to the eggheads that make false remarks.
Would you speak over the microphone? Sergeant, his time is... Sergeant, his time is up if he wants to do that.
This is exactly what's troubling in council chambers during general public comments. The interruptions, not to allow you to use props, not to allow you to use a shirt, not to allow you to speak a certain way, and yes, Mr. Corretts, an EpiPen will save your life if you're bit by a bee. So if you're saying that any child can touch a bee and play with a bee, you're totally incorrect and wrong. And just because this is for business purpose, for monies the city is trying to acquire to put bees in your backyard, please, give me a break. And top note, why today is there a problem with the improvement district of downtown Los Angeles? I, myself, and those of you Angelenos in Los Angeles, have you viewed the district safety people when they harass and intimidate and bother homeless people on a public sidewalk? This ban needs to stop. People need homes, homeless people have a right, and you're violating their civil rights. City Attorney Carol Sobel, S-O-B-E-L, has stated cruel and unusual punishment. And for those of you listening today, isn't it cruel to allow another human being to be placed out on our streets and take his supplies, take his only life possessions and dump them in the trash? This is what Los Angeles does to all of you. So when you're visiting Los Angeles, take a look at the homeless population and question our city of Los Angeles is this, what are you really doing to stop this? I'm going to take this to Lucille Roybaugh Allard in question, the 40th District.
That completes public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements? We're going to remember our president's this weekend, it's president's weekend, wish you everybody well. Any special things in the districts? Get out, enjoy Los Angeles, be water-wise. Let's now stand for adjourning motions. Sergeants, please ask all stand for adjourning motions. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, colleagues. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Emily Elizabeth Rivera, who passed away on February 7, 2014. Her final days were spent surrounded by family and friends that Emily had touched in some way throughout her short, yet very memorable, life. Her family said Emily was put on this earth to bring joy to those who met her. If she wasn't entertaining younger kids with her loving nature, she was amusing adults with her warm humor. Her favorite pastimes were playing volleyball, dancing, and swimming. Singing, however, was Emily's undeniable talent. Her angelic voice brought peace and harmony to those who heard it. She attended Mary Star of the Sea Middle School. Her teachers, her friends, family will miss Emily. A very sad week in San Pedro. She is survived by her loving parents Judith and Jose Rivera, and brother Matthew. Memorial will be held Tuesday, February 18, 6 to 9 p.m. at Mary Star of the Sea Parish. A mass will be held Wednesday, February 19 at 10:30. May Emily Elizabeth Rivera rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the first sports hero that I ever had as a little kid, Jim Fregosi, who died today after several strokes. I was a big fan when the Angels played in Dodger Stadium, he was their first great player and probably still the player that people associate with the old Angels more than any. He played for the Angels for 11 years, he was a Golden Glove player, I think he was an All-Star for six or seven years, an amazing player, a great guy, had a successful career as a manager afterwards, but was really the heart of the Angels. So I think we should adjourn in the City of the Angels in his memory.
And he's with the Angels now.
Indeed.
No other adjourning motion, Mr. Wesson?
It's, Mr. President, it's not so much an adjourning motion, but just a remembrance that today is the fourth anniversary of the death of my chief of staff, Charmette Baum Pooh, who was only 45 years old. For those of you that were here, you remember her as this four-foot-10 bundle of dynamite, probably one of the most brilliant individuals that one could ever meet. But for the new folks that are here, she's Sacramento-based person, she was my chief counselor when I was Speaker of the House, and when I was elected here on her own, she decided to pick up and move down here from Sacramento. So I told my staff that we would, again, remember her today as the fourth anniversary, and we still miss her madly.
Mr. Corretts?
If I could just say, she was a good friend of mine as well, and I remember her most gratefully for her good work, helping with some of my crazy animal bills in the state legislature when she was there and Herb was Speaker. And when I got elected to the City Council, she helped me with a little group that helped interview candidates for chief of staff. And just a wonderful person, and I miss her as well.
Mr. Bottin?
I worked very closely with her as a chief of staff, as she was chief of staff, and my enduring memories of Charmette is her telling me how she taught you, Mr. Wesson, how to dress, and that you used to wear lime green pants to Sacramento until she intervened.
Those are so nice remarks, it's always so important to remember those who went before us in this day. Let's continue our service well, and this is St. Valentine's Day, and let's remember all those too presently. Serve the city well, have a good weekend, thank you, this meeting's adjourned.